Please join in honor silence.
Thank you very much, please proceed.
He's here to read.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second?
Second by Raddick. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I just wanted to have a discussion about today's agenda. And so, we were made aware, our board was emailed that two agenda items were submitted by the seven or eight county attorney's representatives timely by Thursday. And so, just wanted to ask Supervisor Ong if there was a reason either of them were kept off of the agenda.
Yes, the reason, I believe, is in agreement with the Vice Chair, Dan Bittenger, and if this came up, he was wanting to address it.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair. Yeah, after looking at the request, they didn't have standing. First of all, the request to move, remove the chairman and have any dealings for the union to go through the chairman, I believe would be inappropriate in the sense of the right procedure. Whether the chairman was you, Mark, Keith, anybody else, any political party, doesn't matter. It should go through that, because then at the day, the chair will always have, has to be involved in negotiations. Now, I know the argument might be, well, it might could settle things or get things moving, but I think it's inappropriate to ask, and it's not the right procedural. Second of all, the discussion of whether, discussion about whether, what money is used for potential lawsuits, it should be a closed matter issue, and we wouldn't discuss that publicly or allow an outside entity to determine what the board would do. That'd be the discussion with our legal counsel and that procedure going forward, so.
So, our board has discussed publicly where funds are to come from, from outside legal counsel. And just so the public's aware, the first one is a request for the board to require Chairman Ong to pay for his own legal bills stemming from the actions on 8/29/2024 and thereafter regarding union dues. Now, we understand that that prohibited practice file has been filed against Supervisor Ong. I actually agree with you on that. Our county attorney typically represents us, and if we're not going to outside legal counsel, I can absolutely see, so I agree with that one.
Right.
The one that says any contractual concerns need to be resolved by the local union rep, Woodbury County Labor Attorney, and essentially contemplating new liaisons from the board?
Right.
That's something our board should decide. And so, I guess my heartburn is, we're not a board of one or two, and if it doesn't have something that should be heard in the public light of day, then this board won't support it. But to keep items off the agenda, not good a practice.
Well, that may be true, but in this.
It is true, because that's something that ultimately, they think there are means to try to put that on the agenda otherwise, and I'd probably have to defer to the auditor on that.
Is this deliberation, auditor or attorney?
Attorney.
I believe this is deliberation. These are issues that the board would need to take up to determine what you want to put on the agenda, or not put on the agenda, but you're discussing them in front of, I mean, these, if you want it on the agenda, those are issues that are taken up by the board. You're discussing why it, or why it's not on the agenda. You're getting into deliberation at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Supervisor Raddick and I will put that on the agenda next week. And we will do that because this is what should be done, and I believe that that's the means for getting things on the agenda when they're kept off. Even if there's a particular supervisor that doesn't like it or two, it should be the majority of the board and the public should be able to hear that discussion rather than behind closed doors. Thank you. For that reason, I'll be voting no on the agenda.
You are free to disagree, Mr. Taylor.
Absolutely.
All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Passes four one. Taylor opposed. Items two through six constitute consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Item is passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the September 3rd meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from Human Resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. I do want to highlight the hiring of a county engineer. I've asked Supervisor Nelson to cover that as he's been involved with some of those interviews along with some others. So, you want to say a few words on this?
Thank you, Chairman Ong, and Keith Raddick, Supervisor Raddick, you can feel free to jump in too, since you were part of those interviews, but yes, Laura Severs is going to be the next engineer at Woodbury County. She comes from a great background of, not only with working in county government as an engineer in Northwest Iowa with neighboring counties, but also a great resume with Iowa DOT as well. I was really, really impressed meeting with her. Her references were great. I like that she's local, she's young, she's energetic, and I think that she will do great things. We've, it's been a long process to get here. Mark Nero was gracious enough to let the county know that he had ambitions to retire and was willing to stick around until we found a suitable replacement. And we started this process about the first or second week of January. We had two applicants immediately that didn't pan out, and then there was nothing until this one. But we're thankful that it was a very, very good applicant. Great things come to those who wait, and so I'm very excited to have her join Woodbury County and be excited to work with her, so.
Thank you. Item five from Secondary Roads is approval of the permit to work in the right-of-way for E.B. Baker. Item six in Board Administration is approval of resolution for abatement of taxes for Abune, Aragawi, Tigre Orthodox Towado Church. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item seven from Building Services is approval of emergency generator service contract and annual payment option with Ziegler Cat.
Good afternoon. Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. The item before you is a service contract for the emergency generator at the new law enforcement center. This is an item that has been budgeted for in the Building Services operating budget for that facility. This is a three-year contract. Ziegler Cat offers two different options on payment on their contracts. One is a monthly payment option, the other is an annual payment option. Usually their annual payment option is slightly less than the monthly one. In this case, basically $796 a year, or triple that over the three-year contract period. We are required to monthly do service PMs on the emergency generator. That paperwork is furnished to the State Corrections Inspector during his annual report. That's one of the things he asks for, and we provide that paperwork. So, this is an important contract, the first of several that I'll be bringing to the board. So, we're asking for approval to proceed with this contract at an annual payment. Have any questions?
What's involved with this service contract? Are we on the hook for any parts, maintenance? How does that work?
Usually with these service contracts, yes, we are on the hook for standard parts that they use. They'll use things like oil filters, air filters. So, we're on the hook for those type of things. What the coverage for this is, is that service work. They perform the work. They don't charge the labor for it. What they do is, they'll do readings, record those readings with specialized equipment, furnish those reports to us. They'll do things like oil sampling of the generator itself to make sure there's no materials or breakdown that's occurring inside that generator that we might not know about, similar to what you would do in your car engine if you changed the oil and you found metal in it. They'll do, they'll actually do oil sampling and send in analysis and give you a report on that. Log hours on the unit, things that aren't covered, and you'll see it, it's buried deep in their contract, but if there are any changes or requirements of the state as far as the procedures on how an emergency generator might function or the needs such as emergency e-stops or anything unusual like that, that is a new requirement. Of course, that would be the county, at the county's expense. They would help perform some of that work, but it would be at the county's expense, which is a normal procedure with anything like that.
I would move the approval of the Ziegler Cat contract and the annual payment option.
Second?
This is by Taylor, second by Bittenger. Any comments? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight from the county auditor is approval to purchase a plotter slash scanner to replace current equipment for GIS mapping needs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a, every year, we have a meeting with the IT Department and the City of Sioux City and the county. And we're looking at, and this is an item that came up during that meeting. And what it is, is a plotter that we have in the recorder's office, and it's over five years old. And what has occurred, they do provide a package, a contract to take care of anything that arises during the year. And what has been happening is that there have been issues with it when it's down, and we have people that come in from the outside that use it and the other departments. The county attorney's office has used it before and that sort of thing. It's a scanner that can plot in, or scan in very large items. But the issue has been is that it's starting to break down more often, and it can, it causes issues with them to be able to get their work done. And so, they've asked, they asked me to bring it forward, and that's what I've done.
I would move the approval of the purchase and designate gaming revenue funds in order to cover it.
Second?
Motion by Taylor, second by Bittenger. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item nine from Secondary Roads includes A, receive bids for crack routing and sealing and return of the county engineer for review and recommendation.
Okay. Could we go on to C?
Sure. We'll move on to nine C. Receive bids and award bid if low quote is clearly determined by bid results for crane rental setting the pre-cast box culvert replacement for county bridge U-137.
We took quotations from a number of companies for placement of a box culvert. This is at the intersection of Hancock Avenue and 290th Street. It's at the south end of the road where we'll be replacing a Old Trust Bridge that's been closed for about seven years. That project is in the January 2025 letting. Didn't make a lot of sense to replace that bridge and not take care of the deficient bridge down at the intersection. We did hydraulic design, and we're looking at a pre-cast box culvert. The board has already purchased that. The work is being done by county crews, but we don't have the ability to pick up 30,000-pound sections of concrete pipe and move them, put them into place. We took quotations from three responsive bidders. Barnhart Crane was the low quote at $6,884 for two days of work for us. I recommend award to Barnhart Crane.
I'll move it.
Second the motion by Nelson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
We'll have another of these coming where we're replacing a short-span bridge with a box. That'll be under D-38. We took quotes for that, but the board ordered it a couple of weeks ago, so you'll see another bid like this coming again.
Where's that one on D-38?
Where at on D-38? You would ask that. They're just a very short-span bridge. It's, I want to say it's between Jasper and the town, but I can't tell you exactly, I can't give you the exact location off the top of my head. But it is a bridge now. It'll be a box. We'll be removing the rail and everything up on top. It appears we have no bids for crack seal, so we'll have to go out and try and resolicit. We announced it as a bid. We sent it out to a number of our contractors in the past. It's part of our pavement maintenance work that we typically go out two and five years after we resurface the road and treat the cracks to help prevent those cracks from rolling over and continue to give us a smooth ride on the road. So, we'll contact, see if our timing was bad. Maybe we have to give them the opportunity to do this work in the spring, and we'll resubmit, request for bids.
Move the table nine A and B.
Second?
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. We'll now reassess the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Bennett, McDonald, Levy, and Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting with item number 10 from ISG and the county engineer. This is for action, approval to direct the drainage engineer to file a written request to the Corps of Engineers to address repairs to the Bennett, McDonald, Smithland, Levy District.
I guess I could, I could kick it off last Wednesday, Thursday morning.
Thursday.
Thursday morning, we had a meeting with the Corps of Engineers and the drainage districts downstream of the Bennett, McDonald, Smithland. So, this would be drainage districts within Manona and Harrison Counties that are on the same river system as what Bennett, McDonald, Smithland are on. We have until September 16th to answer whether we want to join in a process that would evaluate the needs of the entire Levy system from Missouri River back up through Highway 141. We're at the very north end of this system. As we've discussed before, the Bennett, McDonald, Smithland is in, I think the term they use is unacceptable condition. It's been that way since floods in 1990 and 93, and it's been cost prohibitive to bring that fully into compliance. In working, in listening to the Corps of Engineers and working with the other districts, I'll let Caleb give you an update on the correspondence to date, what the other districts are doing, and what the board's options are for either joining or not joining the Section 120 request.
So, for the Levy system, the way the Corps views it is it's a continuous embankment. And in order to enroll in this Section 120 program, all segments of that system have to submit a request for the Section 120. The big one is a system that stretches on, it'd be the west side of the river from Rodney on down, and then it makes a V, and then it goes back up in Wolf Creek. There's three sponsors on that. There's, I think, four, four or five, or one system, four or five segments, three sponsors. Inner County is the largest sponsor on there. They had damage, but it's very, very minor. They're going, they've already submitted their Section 120 request, but they told the Corps they're going to do the work on their own. But because all sponsors have to submit Section 120, they did it just so that they didn't short out either the Bennett-Smithland District or the Nagle Drainage District. Nagle Drainage District met yesterday and gave authorization to submit that yet. We haven't pulled that paperwork. It's a simple form, but we intend to submit that this week. The deadline for submittal is the 16th of this month. Once it's submitted, the Corps does a damage assessment. There's no cost to the district, or to the Drainage District for that damage assessment. And they put together a project report, project damage report, submit that, and then there's a meeting where you go into the next step. And then after that, then there's potential to accure cost. So, to keep moving forward, get the Corps' opinion, even if the Section 120 isn't pursued, the Corps still has to be involved with permitting repairs. So, they're going to go through the same kind of process anyway. So, this is a way to get them started in the process early to make sure that there's no hangups later on. So, the recommendation is to sign and submit the Section 120 at this time, and then wait and see what the Corps comes back and says.
One of the things that is required, and again, the board can back away from this after you see what the total estimate is, that you're submitting that you are willing to, willing and able to financially back the cost of repairs. They will still take a look at it, and once the estimate comes in, it's at that point you have the project agreement where you would take on that burden. So, at this point, while you're signing on to the Section 120 request, you are stating that you're financially capable of taking that on, but you are not making that ultimate financial commitment to do the repair.
How confident are you of that? I mean, just reading in the recommendation, according to the Corps of Engineer staff at the meeting, submitting the written request is not a final commitment. Is that in writing that that's not obligating? I would, I guess what I don't want to go on is just, well, remember when he said that? And then you find out, well, actually, this is what that meant. So, is there something in rules or drainage attorney that said you're in the clear? Because once that ball begins, I don't want to, there's no take backs.
That was asked directly to the Corps. Why is this statement in here up front if there's no obligation after the fact? What teeth does this hold? And the response that I got was, the Corps hasn't been through this process the full way through to know. And, but to date, they have four active 120s following the flooding of 2019 in Southwest Iowa and Nebraska, and they have entered into a cooperative agreement with those sponsors. And they have entered into engineering and permitting for those repairs. So, no one has backed out or anything like that. Payment has been made. So, this has not come up yet.
That gives me heartburn.
Yes, it does.
It gives me heartburn.
Right. I mean, I just, the whole regret eight years from now when somebody says, well, who is the, who are the guys that did this? I just don't want to, you know, unless there's some sort of clarity by drainage attorney or rules that say, this is what you're actually committing to, you know?
So, the cost right now is unknown. They, you don't know what you're committing to. Essentially, it's a blank check, which.
Makes it worse.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, the Corps, in their original, I guess, submittal for damage request in this, forgot language that included that statement, capable and willing to pay. They sent out a revised document with that information, and then through conversation with them, it came about that all sponsors had to submit this. I had asked them if this had been communicated to all sponsors, and they said no. And I asked if a joint meeting would be necessary, and they said yes. Would you be willing to coordinate that? I don't think that is my responsibility as, you know, a single engineer for, you know, two districts out of three to coordinate an all-sponsor meeting. We did that, and we got it, and we got that information. And essentially, they won't, they won't fund it.
All three have to participate and agree to it to get past this Section 120 request. And again, they do the engineering work, they determine the level of damages. They determined also, the Section 120 doesn't cover the pre-flood damages. So, their engineering assessment would say, okay, this occurred during the flood. This, according to the prior inspections of the Levy system, is not included.
So, here, sorry.
We're on the hook for.
Here's my other heartburn. This hasn't been compliant for 31 years, and by Monday, we have to make a decision.
Yeah. I agree with Supervisor Taylor. From reading the initial backup, I'm concerned with the language. There's a lot of loopholes, and I'm not an attorney, understand the depths of this contract, but it's.
And that's, so at this meeting, I had requested that Iowa Homeland Security Emergency Management Office of Levy Safety be there, and they were present for that. In addition, there was a drainage attorney that represents the Nagle and the Bennett-Smithland-McDonald there as well. This was asked explicitly, and it is in the records, both Inner County and Nagle Drainage District were in session, and it is official minutes that the Corps said that it, there's no teeth to it in those records. So, that is on record, and there is a base, let's say, State Iowa Homeland Security was there, and we have an attorney there as well.
Basically, I think what you're saying with the Section 120 agreement is you're capable of bonding or billing for the cost of the repair work. So, you're financially capable. But after that comes through, then the project agreement is signed. Based on what they told us and reading through that letter, that's what I got out of it. But I want you all to go in with wide, open eyes on this.
Well, the problem I have is kind of a fool me once, shame on me, or a fool me once, shame on me, fool me on you, fool me twice, shame on me. We have a maintenance contract with them now that we see maintenance as changing the oil in the car. The Corps sees it as completely replacing the engine and the transmission. And so, we've already got issues with their verbiage and how they see things. And to me, this thing is so open-ended, and already having that dialogue with them that I think is, they're way out of line. That's my concern.
Well, and the other concern, I agree, is what, Mark, you mentioned, right, what's prior damage going back to 1990, 93 that we'll be on the hook for to break? Because you, you know, you just said that everything has to be in compliance to get past Section 120. I mean, who knows what that'll run us?
And the thing they didn't commit to is, at what portion is it considered in compliance?
Correct.
Is it back to original template from when it was constructed in 1964? Or is it in condition it was in in 1990 where the benches might not have been 40-foot wide?
Right.
On top, where, it's very different from what it is today. We have damage on Parnell Creek, the Parnell Creek branch of it that runs about 250, 300 feet, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars to fix. We have over 1,200 feet of damage along the main run of the river that is extensive, and we're talking over a million dollars to repair and replace that. There's a small portion of the work downstream of the 141 bridge about where you'd expect to see it from scour and water coming through a constriction in the river that both banks were eaten away in part, both right bank and left bank adjacent to the McCollin and Mord Horse properties that we're not quite back into the profile of the Levy like we are on the upstream side, but damage was done. It got behind the riprap and through it and ate those areas pretty hard. Those two areas were both in good condition prior, but the Levy was in unacceptable condition. They were not something that was identified in those inspection reports. The biggest problem we have is on that portion north of old 141, or new 141.
But see, the heartburn that I have is that they can say, oh, there's prior damage in 93 and 91 or whatever. But that was still on them, in my opinion. 93 was a historic flood, just like this one was. And the agreement that they have with us is that, not that they hand it over and completely wash their hands, they just asked us to do some maintenance. So, that's what, that's what I think is egregious, is that they want to blame all this on us, and they haven't been involved at all, and now they're just leaving this open-ended, I don't know. I just, I don't trust it.
I fully agree with you on that, but we lost that battle 20 years ago, 25 years ago. I mean, we, we have been told by Corps of Engineers of listening compliance, but it's been cost prohibitive to go out there and do that. There's only five landowners that are in our stretch of this district.
Imagine them getting a $1.1 million bill. I mean, that's my other heartburn is that, how many times as a supervisor, have you been at the tip of the spear when you've had Drainage District Trustees and landowners come and say, wait a second? So, for 31 years, you could have paid $35,000 some odd dollars every year, but you waited. but you waited for 31 years, and then you gave us a $1.1 million bill because you signed on to some Corps of Engineer agreement? I mean, that's my, my fear.
Nobody's paid that much per year, but.
What's that?
Nobody's paid that much per year.
My point is, they would have if you parsed out the $1.1 million since 1993. You would have paid $35,000 a year. But instead, we waited until now, signed this agreement, and then all of a sudden, we stuck it to them all at once? I mean, that's the math.
It would have been stuck at some point, you know, and, and inflation is, is, is putting that number considerably above what it was in 1993. But that decision was made by prior boards, prior trustees to do the minimum to keep it in place and keep it as a protective dike.
Right, but do you get my point where all of a sudden, let's do it all at once after three decades?
Well, again, that's, that's the offer of the Section 120 program.
To complement that, damages that are new would be 100% picked up by the Corps of Engineers. So.
New meaning what?
If there wasn't pre-existing damage, so they'll go back to an inspection report from 2022, and they will use that as their baseline for damages. So if there's any damages in that that are identified, that's not eligible for funding. But if there's something new in that that is beyond that report in 2022, they will pick that up.
So why the change of heart?
No, it's not a change of heart.
It's a clarification.
Yeah. It's.
But where was this in 93?
This, this Section 120 is part of the Water Resource Development Act of 2020, which was adopted after the 2019 flood. So nothing like this program existed up until four years ago.
And, and something was passed by the Iowa Legislature in 2022, which is they created a new Levy Office of Levy Safety for Iowa that currently has $5 million budgeted to assist counties like Woodbury, Harrison, Monona in making those repairs on the levees that aren't compliant.
And it's state funds, so it can be used for engineering permitting construction. It is a cost share though, so.
So here's my thought. I don't know, I think all of us would love to know, what's the total bill? It'd be interesting to know what's, what's the damage assessment, what's the bill? But I'm not comfortable signing until we can get a, a, a information from our, either our county attorney's office or a drainage attorney before I would even sign this. But I am, I, but I do think we need to know the second part of it is getting the assessment so we know what is the total damage, what's, but does that make sense? I, I don't want to go forward, do I have, I agree with Supervisor Taylor. I'm nervous, I'm nervous there's going to be a loophole. There's always loophole in governments where we'll be hooked. And I don't think we want to even attempt to even try to quote bond or even try to find money for this until we know what's the, the, the exact total with the assurance from our own attorney. And I, I thank you for that, that, that attorney, it's in the meeting notes, that's great. I mean, that's, that's wonderful, but to me, that doesn't bring me comfort or assurance. I want to know it from, from our own attorney or for someone that we, that we have in writing. But I know it's close, I don't really have a week to apply for, that's correct, right?
Yeah, the 16th.
You have one week.
Yeah. I will state that we did do a damage estimate for FEMA submittal in hopes that FEMA would have a change of heart and offer to pay for something, and that was $2 million. So that also, at that time, assumed that, that was immediately right after the failure or the flooding. And then had assumed that a box, a box culvert adjacent to Rodney was in need of replacement. So there's additional buffer in that $2 million. But that is based on a 2009 damage report for the sections down below that we had used and extrapolated up based on an actual drone flight and measured damages there.
We're able to see it now, which is something that we weren't able to do. I was out on the levee yesterday and drove the length looking for where we were at with damages. And again, what I've quantified on downstream of the 141 bridge, other than some minor debris cleanup, there's not a lot, and that was all deposited by the current flood. That portion had been intact prior to the flood. Our cost is all in that left bank upstream of 141. And that's, that's where the potential risk lies. If the Board chooses not to participate or, or not to give direction, then all three drainage districts lose their ability to make the Section 120. They're using our neighbors to beat us over the head with.
So here's where I'm at, and, and maybe, I'm no drainage attorney. But it says, step five, funding. Sponsors shall make the full amount available to the Corps. If at any time the Corps determines that additional funds are required to cover such costs, the sponsors shall provide those funds within 30 calendar days.
And that's after a project agreement is in place.
Right. The sponsor provides a letter of intent confirming the sponsor's intent to proceed. So you're saying that that's a trigger and that we have some verbal.
That is step four of what they gave us as far as information headed down the road.
Once the cooperative agreement is signed, so that's a very specific document, the cooperative agreement, there's 60, 30 days, I forget which one it is, 30 days that payment has to be made after that. But you don't have, they don't require the payment, and that is in the Section 120 of that.
It's 30 days.
So if that cooperative agreement is not signed, there's 30 days. But then again, the question, why is the language capable and willing in that initial letter?
Right, and I hate to be cynical, but my trust in our federal government right now, not at an all-time high. But that's just me.
Wait, all the questions here were asked directly to the Corps, and we weren't given any solid answers.
So my question is to our county attorney, is this something that the county attorney's office could give us a, an opinion on or a ruling on? Or is this, or what's your thoughts, county attorney?
If you want to get in line behind the three murders I'm dealing with right now and happened the last two weeks, so the answer is no, there's no one in the office that has the expertise to do that, nor do we have the resource or time to do it. I'm sorry, Mr. Benjer.
That's fair, thank you.
So I guess I'm of the opinion that this is a huge burden to put on five landowners. But at the same time, are we committing funds? Are we trying to get funds from somewhere else? The other fear I have is that, I mean, it seems like the odds of a flood in the next 10 years are a lot higher than we've ever been told. It's not 100 years, it's not 500 years. It seems like within the next 10 years, something's probably going to happen again. Is the damage to the property going to be more than a million dollars if we do nothing?
This has been where the Corps of Engineers and the county have had difficulty in getting the Corps of Engineers to invest in those repairs between 1990 and, let's just say, January 1 of 2023. The benefit cost ratio that the Corps of Engineers came up with was 0.16 to 1 for bringing that levy into compliance. They didn't deem it of, of, that it met a benefit cost ratio. 1 is generally considered a break even. Our dike has the Poverty Hollow dike that cuts off a failure from proceeding down and, for instance, taking out Rodney. So our system, this is the first time they've combined all of them to have any consideration of work. When they were evaluating whether or not ours merited repair, they looked at the Bennett McDonald Smithland as an isolated system to come up with that 0.16 to 1. The Parnell, or the Poverty Hollow dike cuts us, cuts off a failure of the Bennett McDonald dike and confines it so that it doesn't go down and flood a town. Had that Poverty Hollow dike not been there and water could continue toward Rodney, then we would have had a higher benefit cost ratio. But in this case, we're protecting agricultural ground. What we were working at after the 2023 inspection that we did with Corps of Engineers, they come out and look at it annually, tell us what needs the, the system has, was the possibility of having the portion north of 141 taken out of the system. That would then rely on Highway 141, which breached, to protect the lands downstream. But the, the, it, the Parnell Creek portion of the dike also breached, but it didn't, it overtopped. It didn't breach. There is no hole in the dike that caused water to come onto that ag ground to go across 141 and into the property south. Our water didn't threaten Rodney. It was confined as it was designed in that Poverty Hollow area. That's kind of, that opportunity isn't here within the confines of the Section 120 because our whole area will be treated as a system in that case. But again, the handout that, that I gave you, you know, it lays out the, the steps that we're talking about. Step one being that written request. And it says, it must include a statement from the sponsors' interests, willingness, and capability to pay in advance for all planning, design, construction costs. Corps does their inspection is step two. Step three is letter of intent. The Corps communicates rough order of magnitude cost for which the sponsor will be responsible for. In other words, they look at it and they say, this is required for you to bring in a compliance. This is damage that occurred that we'll pay for. That's step three. Step four is the cooperative agreement. At that point, they submit a draft cooperative agreement. In addition to the required cost for the repair and restoration of the project, it requires the non-federal sponsor to provide sufficient funding to cover all costs. So at that point, you're in for the pound.
So have we heard from any of the five property owners as to their intentions, what they would like us to do? Because I have a hard time having us five make a decision.
We got this information Thursday. You guys happen to be the Board of Trustees. We do have one landowner here, at least one landowner here. That's Dennis McCall, who owns the left bank side, and a portion of the right bank.
And then how is it divvied out to those landowners? Is it based off percent of land they own, right?
There's a benefit assessment schedule. It's like a, you know, it's kind of like a stormwater.
Remember, we did for the Wolf Creek about 40 years ago. That was done many years ago for this district.
So somebody could have like 80% of it, and the other four could have the other 20.
And one guy has pretty much 80% of it, and the other four have.
And that's my question, will they know that in advance?
What's that?
Will they know what the proportions of landowners in advance? Because you could say, oh, well, there's five of us, and it's going to be split. And then one guy all of a sudden is on the hook for a bunch of it because his ground doesn't have as much of a return. Probably not, it'll be just, here's the bill.
It would be the bill, and it would be distributed according to the relative share of, of what was determined as part of the original distribution of benefit within the district.
Because this is all born on them, it's not any county dollars. And I don't think we want to start a precedent of putting county dollars in drainage districts, is that correct?
Well, that would be, you know, the, the county I, I think could spend reserves, but I don't think you've got that kind of cash just sitting around in a bank account either.
Yeah, and I think you're going to get a legal challenge by those who are outside of the drainage district and incorporated areas that say, wait a second, those are my tax funds, and they're going 28 miles to the west or east, and I have no benefit from that. I mean, we're treading some really strange ground.
No doubt about it.
So could we hear from the landowner? I'm sorry to interrupt you too.
So we, we did ask for an extension. You know, what's the possibility for an extension so that an informational meeting could be held with the landowners? And they were told there's no, no possibility for an extension of that 16th day.
Yeah, 16th is drop dead. According to them, it's 30 days once they determine the water is back in the banks. And they've already given us an extra 30 days because of their failure to recognize the full Section 120 requirements. So that 16th is already an extension they weren't willing. That was my first question at the, at the meeting last week.
I, I get that. But if it's a day late, what does that hurt? Is the money gone? Are people not as impacted? I mean, this, this reminds me of Lawton last year when they had that sewer deal, and Iowa DNR is like, nope, sorry, that's your deadline. If you have to unincorporate the town because you can't fix your sewer, that's your problem. I mean, I just, I get so frustrated with upper level of our government that just, I know it's not you guys, but it's just, come on, I just.
I agree with Supervisor.
You and me both.
Yeah, Ratty, can we have, yeah, could we have a landowner just speak for one, one second? Thank you, gentlemen.
Come on up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Well, to start with, that's a nice point. There's only six of us. I'm supposed to be the 80% I think he's talking about.
Pretty close.
But.
Sorry, sir, we need your name and address.
Dennis McCall, Smithland. I joined this, this is my problem right there, the Little Sioux River. That's a whole, big deal. But my water, I pay drainage, I can guarantee in the last 30 years, I've paid $200,000 in drainage tax. And my drainage, my water, I've got two tubes that go in and under the river, but most of the water doesn't come off my farm. It comes north of me. I've got two or three miles north of me, that's where the water comes from. Why aren't those people charged to some drainage? I don't know how, how this all works for sure. Why am I paying all this drainage? But we've been keeping up with it, but this, next, this hole that is there currently right below the bridge is on my side, on the east side. The next flood's going to take out the whole berm because it's already worked in behind it. And I spent $120,000 on the rock that, the riprap below that that goes clear down around the corner, but it took a hole out right below the bridge. This is just an immediate problem for me, I guess. I don't know who, somebody's, if Mr. Nair or somebody can help fix this thing. If we could fix it, I guess they want to, they want to take it north of the bridge too. The whole berm is already gone up there, and I don't, that's going to be a big deal. But we got two big holes right below the bridge that are in need of immediate attention before the next flood. What do you do? Just wait and let it go? Just let it fall out? I don't know what, I don't know how you fix this thing. Keep talking about trying to get money, but I'd just like to get it fixed, just, just some minor repairs, just a couple chunks. Maybe we could get the, maybe we could get below the bridge fixed, and, and maybe we could work above the bridge. I don't know, I don't have land above the bridge. All mine's 600 acres is right there below the bridge, and I'm trying to save the dike. That's all we're trying to do.
Can I ask you a question? Is that okay, Mr. J? Mr. McCall, am I taking you to suggest that you're not in favor of us agreeing that the Corps will potentially financially obligate?
No, I'd agree to that 100%, but I have no faith in the Corps of Engineers.
Right, right, and that's my, that's my concern, is that if they come out with a $1.1 million thing, and the concern that our supervisors are sharing holds true, and they say, well, now we're going to levy $820,000 to you, that doesn't seem to comport with what you were just saying in terms of, I'd like to make some locally owned decisions and some minor repairs here and there rather than having somebody from the Corps of Engineers say this is the obligation.
Well.
Is that, am I, I don't want to misinterpret if that's.
I doubt it, I'd like to come up with $800,000, but I, I don't know, maybe we could fix it in Woodbury County. I don't know if we can fix that. We got, we're supposed to be connected with, go to the core of the Missouri River. That's a big deal. That's a big deal. We can't fix it to the Missouri River, we can't do that.
And, and you wouldn't be liable for any portion beyond your land?
Well, that I would be in favor of.
The question in front of the Board today is whether we participate in the Section 120 program. If you, whether or not you choose that, we can prepare plans and make repairs to the levy. It wouldn't be covered in that program though, where they might.
It would still have to, it wouldn't be through the 120. So the dis, any new damages post-flood, the district would be on the hook for. So through this, you know, if, if the district could go through today, in theory, if the Corps doesn't have a, you know, an outlandish charge-out rate, it would be the same dollar amount whether or not we did it or if the Corps did it. But if there's new damages out there, the Corps is going to pick up those new damages. So there is a potential reduction in total cost through this.
But that's minimal, isn't that, isn't this for design, construction?
But that's minimal. Isn't that, isn't this for design, construction, planning, and so on? It's not for the actual incurred? Am I, am I missing something here?
No, construction would be full repair of the system within Woodbury County. So the Section 120 repair through that agreement would be fixing it from Parnell Creek all the way through the Woodbury County line.
Okay. So why the disconnect on being financially able to pay for the full costs? Uh, what am I missing here?
Of pre-flood damages.
Okay.
So that's, that's the full cost, uh, is in relation to the pre-flood damages. Post-flood damages, that is picked up by...
Yeah. So it could be two million dollars of damages, but they could say that one point nine million of it was prior to this flood and we're on the hook for that.
That's a pretty big differentiation, right?
Yeah.
It is a big number.
And to add to that, if the process, so this was established after 2019, um, the, the current 120s are still in engineering and design. If there's still deterioration of the facility, so if it gets worse, you're going to be on the hook for that getting worse too. So if it goes and breaches and you lose the embankment, you're going to get more dirt. It just adds to the cost.
Way too many unknowns for me, but that's just my opinion.
And there would be nothing that says that, you know, if you chose not to participate in this, um, just looking out at Woodbury County, you could then direct our drainage engineer to prepare plans to repair the area that's giving Mr. McCall concern. We would get those plans. We'd submit them Corps of Engineers for repair to that damage and see where they go from there. But it would be outside the 120 program. It would be entirely assessed against the benefited properties.
See, I...
But it would be a lot less than a million dollars.
I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think this is where all five of us are at up here. I don't think it's unreasonable that we get a cost estimate and then that we have time to contact the landowners that would be affected. So then they can think it over to see if it's within their financial wherewithal to do it. And then we decide if this is some way proceed. And that's what I, and I know you have nothing to do with that, but that's what's frustrating to me is it's like, nope, got to do it now.
You are saying exactly what I expressed in the meeting with the Corps of Engineers last week is that you're not giving us time to go out and follow any of the state of Iowa procedures for dealing with drainage districts or paying for work on those districts. So, I mean, yes, are we financially capable? Yes, we can bond. We can, uh, use drainage district warrants. We can be financially responsible, but again, you're putting it on five or six landowners. I only counted five, but there might be a sixth one out there that I missed. Or you can go in and, and fix the area that's bad and see what Corps, say, we're not going to participate in the 120. We are going to prepare plans to repair that short stretch to prevent that damage from getting worse. And do debris cleanup. But we wouldn't be, we wouldn't probably get any aid from FEMA or Corps to do that work. But it would be a lot less than in a million.
I'm just not comfortable agreeing to anything without talking to those landowners and seeing what they want done, what they can afford.
You don't have that option.
Yeah, I know. And so I, that's why I'm also not supportive.
Uh, we have a public comment, I think.
Doyle Turner, 2738 200 Street, Mobile. Um, I think what we've got here is we've got things in writing and they don't agree with what people are saying. Why can't we amend the contract so that it says what people are saying? Go ahead and sign it. See if they accept it. You know, um, the big deal is that you sign it. Who knows? Maybe the Coral will agree to that. If they're actually saying that, then it shouldn't be a problem with them.
Thank you.
Did James bring his whiteout?
I have lots of it, but I didn't bring it down.
They did state in a room full of witnesses, but, uh...
They might not be watching.
That you haven't signed on at this point too.
And I will say that there is that five million dollars of cost share through home insurance. Now, that isn't appropriated to anybody. It's a comp, it's a competitive submittal, but it is there and, uh, it's not just a one-time thing. We've been told it will, you know, return on itself.
You know, i- if they end up getting forty million dollars in requests, they'll go to the legislature and say, hey, this program needs more money. And that would be kind of stage two is to instruct our drainage engineer to prepare that application for that grant. I don't know that signing or not signing the Section 120 request would prevent you from do, applying to the state of Iowa for money. I don't believe it would.
No, it won't.
I, I especially think if they're seeing it from our viewpoint where we're expected to just sign this without following any proper notice or any of the, the laws that they put forward for public meetings, uh, it's just not, it's just not right, the position we've been put in here on this. And I guess, you know, if, if you guys believe it's, uh, something we could do cheaper to just repair the levy, then I would rather go that route and not, you know, sit here and kind of force the hand of, you know, five or six property owners in that district.
Through this, the Corps is going to be doing a system-wide repair. In order to do it cheaper, it's going to have to be a spot repair. Either way, like I say, if, if the drainage district wants to go through and all the lenders are, are on board to do a system-wide repair themselves, uh, you know, if the Corps is true on their estimate, it's going to be approximately that. And you're still going to have to go through the Corps through their 408 permit program.
Now, when you say it's a system-wide repair, then does that mean that cost is then borne by those other property owners in the other parts of the system?
Not cost for our repairs. Each, each, the left bank of the Bennett McDonald Smith and the right bank are broken out in the cost estimate. So you know how much is being applied to each. And then we can identify how much each property owner's, uh, share would be of those costs. That's my understanding is, once they got there, they broke it down into the subsystems so you could see where the money is being spent.
I guess I, I'd also feel more confident if we're given the time to know what those costs would be for each individual person because it's kind of like asking everybody in the family to go in on buying this gift, but you don't tell them what gift you're buying and, you know, it just doesn't make sense. So I...
I mean, I wish they had, uh, they were interested, but getting the willingness and capability of paying in advance, that's, that's the one that is hard to swallow. And again, I, I think you all understand, part of the point I was trying to get across is that, um, it's, it's a financial commitment, but they're saying it isn't until you get to the cooperation agreement stage of the game where you have to put up money within sixty days of, of, uh, signing the cooperation agreement.
But potentially it's OPM. It's other people's money.
And are we completely bound to give that money at that point?
Once you sign the cooperative agreement with the Corps, then you are bound to spend the money.
And that, that agreement is step four.
That's step four of this.
So this is step one?
Yep.
Step one is the written request. And you're saying, yeah, we could do this. It isn't saying...
We will?
It says, this must include a statement of the sponsors' interests, willingness, and capability to pay.
But see, without talking to the landowners, we don't know that.
No, you can obligate on behalf of them as trustees of the district.
Yeah, that's not right.
That's, I guess that's your job this time.
We could probably lose their trustee.
But again, we don't, we, we don't have any idea what they're considering the deficiencies in the system until they go through and do their inspection and, uh...
That's why a better program would do that first and then say, now we're going to present.
Congress wrote this.
Right. So I think that means that we can probably move on from this issue, right?
Yeah.
So I would go ahead and move to, uh, indefinitely and, yeah, indefinitely table this till...
Yeah. I'd second that.
I get...
Mr. Taylor, second by Bittenger.
Oh, when you're ready for discussion.
Go ahead.
If I might, I would just say you're not signing the 120 letter because there is no date after this, Jeremy. It's not tabled. You...
Thank you. I'll amend the motion. That's more appropriate. I agree.
Yeah.
If you want to resecond maybe?
Second, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Taylor, second by Bittenger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five zero. Thank you.
Now, with the board's permission, could we return with a proposal to do the repairs from this flood to address Mr. McCall's concerns on, on the downstream side? So that would be, uh, directing our drainage. I, I don't know that you can do that as, as this, but at least if I see head nods, we can begin to work on getting repairs from this year's floods and bring back a proposal to you at a later date.
I think there's consensus on that. So...
Okay. Good. We got our marching orders.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now adjourn the Bennett McDonald Levy and Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting and continue the Board of Supervisors meeting with item 11. From the Board of Supervisors, uh, submitted by myself and Mr. Bittenger, this is for action to authorize the chairman to sign agreement for hospital morgue use with Unity Point Health Sioux City. Um, attached is a contract, um, for monthly morgue fees and case storage. This, uh, came about with, uh, Mr. Bittenger and I doing a couple of visits and meetings with, um, with Jane Arnold, President of Unity Point Health, and also touring, as we reported to the board. Um, the county morgue, a lot of people don't know what that is or how the obligation is on the county, but it is. Um, what we have to consider here is that the, uh, morgue that is maintained physically by the hospital and they also have to, uh, concern themselves with security access and things like that for, um, you know, staff required, is that it's not, um, financially feasible or wise in their eyes to renovate the space to continue the use indefinitely. And so we've been given a goal of a date, uh, you know, you know, kind of a heads up that at the end of next calendar year, uh, they're not going to be continuing that. And so they'll be relocating that and no longer providing use of that, uh, morgue for Woodbury County. So where we are now is since March 1st, 2016, uh, we've had a use fee of, uh, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and a seventy-five dollar per case storage fee, which is, I believe, been reflected on invoicing, um, uh, for autopsies. Uh, under this idea, it would be simplified. It would be separated, the same, same, you know, provider of the services. It's just, it wouldn't be a subcontract through Sue, through pathology. It would be a direct relationship with the hospital. And along with that, since there has not been an increase for about eight years, it seems fair that they would ask for actual costs to be reimbursed to them, uh, which is reflected here. And instead of these flat fees, or instead of the, uh, flat fee for the use, it would be, um, variable based on supplies ordered and, uh, actual costs. And so the first month of this month would be five hundred and thirty-four, sixty-five instead of the two twenty-five flat from previous. Um, this also just provides clarification for the board on what we need to plan for, uh, next year, um, as part of the budget process, uh, perhaps in one or two years, what we're going to do with this morgue situation. Uh, because the hospital, I want to publicly state, has been an excellent partner with the county. Uh, they've absorbed different costs over the years. Obviously, for eight years, they've absorbed costs. Uh, they've, you know, allowed use of their staff for, you know, limited access and securing areas and, um, really been a great partner. So this is a critical service that we need to provide for our citizens and, um, you know, signing something that is, um, appropriate and recommended by their, you know, their, their side is certainly warranted. Mr. Bittenger, do you have anything to add?
Oh, no, I would just reiterate. Yeah, they've been a great partner for the, uh, county and I appreciate their heads up and giving us a heads up. And, uh, they've been good to work with so far and getting us the details and helping us walk through an exit strategy. So that's all.
Any questions?
I'd reiterate, they, they have been a, a great partner for the county. Uh, and quite frankly, to just ask for covering the costs, I don't think that's a big, big request.
Thank you both for your work on it. With that, I'd move in.
Mr. Taylor, second by Nelson. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass is five zero. Item 12 is reports on committee meetings. Mr. Rattig?
Uh, we did have a MURD meeting. I wasn't able to attend, but I was able to basically see the agenda. Uh, I did notice that their investments have moved from T-bills to CDs, five point three percent. I don't know where you've been, but I just thought I'd throw that out there, that they've been getting, uh, good CD percentages on their investments. Um, I also saw their first report of the year on sports gambling and it was only like, uh, four hundred and fifty dollars. But, uh, they might want to maybe put a bet on that four hundred and fifty on Nebraska making the playoffs, right? As a Hawkeye fan, I hate to say that. That's all I got.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Nelson?
I have nothing.
We had an LEC meeting this afternoon, uh, actually covered quite a bit of stuff. So I'll, uh, try to be brief, but, um, first thing we're going to continue to have, we had a discussion about, you know, we're, we've been having LEC meetings every two weeks. I think that started September a year ago. And we're going to continue that at least through final completion. And then we're going to reevaluate if we just need to meet once a month. Um, I think it's just good to provide updates to the public and, and, uh, just provide a place for people to come and ask questions. So we're going to continue that and then we'll reevaluate. The Baker Group contract was, uh, renewed, but at a lower level, they no longer have the office across the street. So we're not paying rent on that building or utilities for that. So that was a nice, um, a nice price break there. Uh, there were several kind of, uh, rumors and issues that we dispelled during the meeting. Uh, one, authority members have been getting comments, questions about public transportation out to the new law enforcement center, whether it's people that need to get to trial or want to be at trial or an inmate getting released. And we had to talk about this because the authority has nothing to do with transportation in or out of the law enforcement center. That is just, that is just nothing that we have anything to do with. Um, Chad Sheehan was at the meeting and he got up and talked and, you know, very plainly, it's the city that has a public transit system. The county does not either. So, but we did talk about Commissioner Moore would like to work on that with the city council. It maybe wouldn't be bad if somebody from the Board of Supervisors, um, wanted to work on that as well. The judges are concerned, you know, some of these folks don't have a means of transportation to get out for court. And so, and with Agape moving in next door, there's probably going to need for public transit there. So, um, this is, you know, it's just time to start working through these, um, details, but we just had to make sure that that's, that's just not our thing. Um, like another thing, instance, we were getting flack on is, uh, that the authority is not providing timelines of, of entities moving in there. Well, we're not in charge of the sheriff's office or the attorney's office moving in there. Uh, the sheriff's office did start moving in there Friday, their front office, and they've had a very successful, um, time moving in. They're getting settled in. That's great. Uh, Chad Sheehan gave an update on kind of the timeline of his people. You know, we don't know the judges when they're going to want to move, but again, that's, that's their deal. Same with county attorneys. Um, but, uh, we're, they are in the process of moving out there and so we're very thankful for that. And then the last thing is, um, Kenny and his team have been very, very busy out there, whether it's installing fixtures that our people need, whether it's helping Housman with the work that they're doing. There's been a lot of warranty items that have come up that they're working through, also as well as punchless items that they're crossing off the list. We were told that Housman has been out there, very active. So that's, that's good to see. Uh, but there was just, just chatter that the authority was going to hire an outside building manager or property manager to oversee this. Um, and that's just not true. And actually, we've got a legal opinion from Jason Kaminsky, who wrote the lease, that the authority does not have the power to do that. So, nor can they hold the Board of Supervisors to, uh, pay for someone to do that. So I wanted to also kind of just shut that down. And Kenny's been so active out there. He knows this building front and back and they're going to hit the ground running. And hopefully we've got enough people for you, Kenny. And if you don't, you're going to have to let us know what you need so we can keep that building in pristine condition and keep it going. So those are kind of some of the hot topics that we talked about. Uh, but the big thing that I want to end on is that we have an open house next Wednesday, September 18th, that, uh, all the members of the public... all the members of the public are invited to from noon to 6:00. We will be giving tours every half hour out at the new law enforcement center. The secure areas of the jail will not be part of the tours, but you'll be able to see all the other front spaces, and so we invite the public to come out and, and see it, take a tour, and participate. So that's next Wednesday from noon to 6:00 with tours every half hour, so, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no other reports on committee meetings. Item 13 is citizen concerns. Are there any citizen concerns? Seeing none. Item 14 is board concerns. Mr. Rattig?
Yeah, I do have a concern on, we've gotten some emails as the liaison to Building Services' supervisor on, just kind of clarifying what's going to be maintenance at the new LEC and kind of working towards that now that we're in there. Obviously figuring out what things and systems he can touch and fix and work on, what things they consider warranty things that they can't touch, we need that kind of clearly spelled out for, I think for Kenny's sake, and just for liabilities factor as well. I did have a second concern. I saw this, and I wanted to make it known that there is no longer just a certified county supervisor sitting up here, there's now two. And on behalf of ISAC's president from 2024, Jason Vanderhoff, I did want to present this certificate of completion. We have certified supervisor Dan Bittenger amongst us.
All right. Thank you, Suge.
Speech. It was a hard fight to get this, you know, I had to battle through, no. Thanks, Keith. No. A lot of learning and I continue learning, but it was, it's a great opportunity to go and learn at ISAC and just thankful to serve and look forward to using all the information wisely to help benefit Woodbury County.
Look at you, all growed up. Proud of your dad.
Right. The only benefit really is a piece of paper, that's about right, that's about, just, it's the real benefit right there.
You can get mocked for it, you know, like me sometimes, you know, it's not all bad. Any other board concerns?
But I, I got two, but yeah, to answer Keith's, I've been talking with Kenny and Shane this week, and, and I think that's what's frustrating with the warranty stuff, is you've got to process. And Kenny and his guys are just used to just going and fixing a problem and, and dealing with it, and, you know, they, we know what the process is, and hopefully, we can continue to get a good response, and hopefully, we run out of warranty issues, you know, Kenny that you don't have to deal with. But we do need to have a conversation on the maintenance and replacement items yet, so... The other concern I had was in regards to an agenda item I had, I think it was two weeks ago, involving the, the paving in Anthem. There's been some new developments, and I'd like if, if Mark could come up, because we're kind of under a, a time crunch, and so I just wanted Mark to kind of give us up to speed, and we just found some of this out today, so...
I am just full of good news today. We submitted our check plans incorporating the work within Anthem to resurface the street as was discussed at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Our check plan comments were from Iowa DOT that regulates the use of our farm-to-market funding, and they noted that we did not address ADA concerns within the community as part of this project. That's a requirement, even though there is no federal aid involved with this project, since farm-to-market funding is a channel for federal aid. Federal Highway Administration feels every dollar that flows from there is subject to federal aid requirements. Normally, when we do a project, as part of our project agreement, we have it in place, the city, county pays for the center 22 feet, the city pays for everything outside of that. The ADA requirements up there, we have sidewalk running along both sides of Bridge Street most of the way from the community center back toward where the elevator post office and that block is. 12 crossings in all. Some areas where drainage is being run under the sidewalk at this point in time. There are a lot of complications in putting together an ADA design at this late date. Our final plans are due the 17th of September. If we don't make the final plan turn-in date, we get dropped back one levy. That's, or one letting. That's something that could get expensive as contractors start filling their books for the year. There are no ADA complications in the portion of the city of Anthem work that lays west of 31. There are no sidewalks, it's an open ditch rural section. That was what we had programmed, and the DOT local system staff caught the ADA requirements at, at this point. I just, while, while I was standing up here, I got a call from the local system staff member reviewing our plans. Typically, there's no way to get out of this, the city would like to write a letter in support of allowing us to do the, the work in town with a promise that they'll address the ADA later. I spoke with City Councilman Tony McFarland this afternoon, and I, I believe the city would have every intention of following through on that, but typically, DOT is not sympathetic on that cause. I have to make a decision to, to keep that in the letting that could cost the county thousands of dollars. I'll try to do what I can for Anthem, but I would like to drop the portion in town if I have no other choice at the end of this week. And there are things we could do since the board is, you haven't made a decision yet, Mark was going to bring that back to the board for consideration, but there have been discussion of utilizing some local funds, including local option sales tax. That would not be subject to the requirements of following the ADA, I don't believe, so we could still do that work within the town. Once we have a contractor there and price is established, we'd have a second local letting to do that work. We also have about a three-quarter mile stub of asphalt that could enrich that local project a little bit. It runs from D-38 down to the cemetery southwest of town.
So what you're saying is, just so everybody's clear, if we, if we stay away from using any farm-to-market money on that east portion, say we use local option sales tax, say we use reserves, whatever it is, but it's not farm-to-market money, then the ADA is a non-factor?
The DOT is not regulating our project at that point.
Okay.
I, I'm just interested in your thoughts.
I assume that we'll have another agenda item coming back in the future?
Yeah. This was on my list.
From the look in your eye, yeah.
So this was on my to-do list for next week's meeting, and then this came up today, so it was, I mean, the timing was okay, but just that we're under the gun.
Yeah, we, we would have had plenty of time to solve the local financing of the project, but, I mean, now we've got a make-or-break issue on, on the final plan turn-in. If we don't make that 17th, we get dropped one month. I see the January letting as being more favorable than February because contractors are filling up their year, and that can be...
I agree.
As I said, thousands of dollars in a nine-mile paving project, just a $25 increase in the cost of asphalt or built into the mix cost, it, it starts to get very expensive for the county in that case.
Can I circle back to another issue, unless there are other comments? No, it's for this Mark.
That was, I don't know if you need anything else for board comments on, on that issue?
I guess we'll, we'll talk on an agenda item for next week as far as what we can, you know, what funding we can use for that road, and see if we can try to still get it all done together, but, yeah, so thank you for working on that.
It would be separate from our farm-to-market project, but my, my recommendation is we go with it as programmed originally.
But we could do that west portion farm-to-market yet.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It would just, which would take a little bit off the total.
There's no ADA issues on that, so... We don't have to build what's not there.
Correct, yeah.
But we do have to improve what's in non-compliance that is present.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what nails us in town.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm good.
You done with me?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, if I could, and I'm sorry to prolong the meeting, just quickly, on the LEC, thank you for the update. Just two questions, as far as the off-ramp for both the general contractor to have to work the warranty issues and the project manager or the project management team, what are we looking at in terms of dates? And I'm just, I'm thinking in Kenny's spot, let's say you've got a three-year warranty on a chiller, like 12 to 18 months from now, something's happening. We aren't suspecting that at that point Kenny or his people are going to have to work with Hausmann in order to solve an immediate issue, like, do we know what the two projected forward dates are, like, we're looking for the Baker Group for two more months and then, or after that, the general contractor's not going to, once this other final, final thing is done? Do you get what, what I'm asking, just for his sanity and livability?
So just speaking for myself and not the other two people on the authority, as we continue to work through some of these punchless items to get to final completion, ideally, we would continue to have our two guys on the ground out there at least till the end of final completion. And then after that point, I think that we need to negotiate a price decrease and, because if we don't need two guys out there working, we're not, we're not paying for that, right? And so, I think Shane is going to be instrumental in any potential litigation, but I think that that needs to be charged and documented on a per-hour basis so that we can recoup cost for that, because that's going to be very specific work, it has nothing to do with the building, it's just for that. And so what I'd like to see is him moving to like an hourly deal where if he's working on that, that's, we can document it, we can say this is legit, you know? And then if we have somebody else that's still out there finishing up some of the paperwork, closing documents, that kind of stuff, maybe towards the end of this year, that should suffice. I've asked this week that Kenny be included on any of the warranty claims, warranty paperwork so that he understands the process, because some of these warranties are, they're going to flow through Hausmann, and then it's whether it's Suter that fixes it or whoever the case may be. And so, while the Baker Group is handling that now, because they're on the project, when they're off, it's going to be Kenny. And so I've made a request that they bring Kenny in and make sure that all of them are working together so that Kenny is getting up to speed, and he's been out there the whole time, so I mean, he knows the people who he needs to talk to, but ideally, that would be how I want to see this phased out.
I just don't, and, and I agree, phased out in terms of the, especially the general contractor having to go through when that entity is far closed out mentally or physically on this thing, I just, with a 24/7 facility, as you all know, when there's an immediate need, that can, you know, depending on the weather conditions and what's going on, that can be a pretty hairy situation within four hours. So relying, as I'm sure you would agree, on Hausmann to be able to, you know, route that back, it's just...
For sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
So there, I stood up because I believe the board and the authority, I didn't mention the authority meeting today, but something you should all know is that our architect is working on finishing out all the warranty information. Now, due to some of the litigation that we have going on, that may impact what some of those warranty dates are. That being said, we still, as an operating owner, are required to service our equipment to maintain our warranties. So what that means is, let's take our chillers, for example. The building's been turned over to us. Although the chillers may not be quite operating correctly, they're under warranty. Therefore, our subcontractor for the project is still working on those, under warranty. However, as building operations, it's Building Services' job to still maintain that equipment. So we have to go in and clean coils, change, change filters, we have to prove that we've maintained that equipment to the manufacturer. We have to document this information. Otherwise, if a problem arises down the road and we tell the manufacturer, hey, we're under warranty, we have a bad motor, we want you to replace it, please do so as quickly as possible, they'll ask for our records, let's see where you've maintained it. Oh, you didn't change the filters, or you didn't have a qualified, certified technician come and do oil sampling and make sure there wasn't a problem earlier? You don't have documentation for that? If you don't, you don't have a warranty. You're on your own. So I just wanted to clarify, there's some uncharted waters right now with that and that I'm concerned with that, that we should keep in mind. Thanks.
Any other board concerns?